To our truth and taxation hearing for the city council in the city of Woodland Hills. It is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, and we have our full council in attendance. And I'm the mayor Wendy Prey. And we are grateful to the citizens that are here to comment either in person in attending in our other room or by Zoom. As, let's see, so we will just open up for public comment. We will start with the people that are here in person. If you would come into the council room one at a time and state your name and we'll give you two minutes to comment. I think, well, how many people have we got online at this point?
Yeah, one at a time.
I'm thinking we can give three because we don't, I don't know if we have. Okay, all right, we'll stay at two like we've always done. Is that, you guys comfortable with that? So I'll give you two minutes. I'll give you a warn, a heads up at one and a half minutes just to give you a chance to wind up your comments if you need them.
I'm okay with five.
All right, so let's get our first, if we have somebody from the public that would like to comment in our hearing. I think Jody is gathering them from the other room. Okay, we don't have anyone here in person. If you are attending by Zoom and would like to make a comment, please use the Zoom feature to raise your hand. We can't, oh, we try to see your picture, but sometimes we don't see your picture raising your hand. So if you will use the Zoom feature to raise your hand, that will be very helpful. Jody, do you have anyone? Give her a minute to sit back down. She's been in the other room trying to collect people. So then we'll check and see if anybody's got their Zoom hand raised. No? No comments from the public attending by Zoom or from the other room? Okay.
Want to know if they come in person? Yes, in person, if you hurry.
Okay.
If they don't hurry.
Yep.
Well, we don't suppose it.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to close, close this to public comment. We could, we can close it to public comment, have a pledge and invocation, and then we can go back and take some comment if we, from somebody if they show up. Okay, so let's, I will close comments, but we have received information from somebody that was confused whether they could come in person, so they're on their way. So we will actually start, help ask council member Ottley to lead us in a pledge and council member Pratt to offer an invocation, and then we'll go back and see if we have public comment. Let's hear it.
Please stand and follow. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this evening. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet as a council and also with our great residents. We're so grateful for the care and concern that thou has had over our city as we've had a lot of rain over this last month. We're grateful to be spared and we pray for those that were affected, that they might be taken care of. We pray that thou would bless us in our deliberations this night, that we might be kind and that we might seek to understand and that most of all that we can judge rightly. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bob and Dave. Let's see. Carrie, we used to go and see if person trying to get here made it. It depends on the year. Okay. Well, we can talk about, okay, let's give Janice two minutes. Oh. Janice, were you faking us out or do you really want to say something?
What did I do? I didn't mean to. I have nothing to say.
And Chris, you're not fooling anybody. We know you're not Jody.
He's in a big room.
Oh, I see you're on Jody's computer. Got it. All right, well, we can go to, I guess, a business and discussion, item number two, the reason request and discuss that.
I thought that was, that's number four. We've got the adopting a certified tax rate, but you want to wait on that?
Yeah. Okay, well, I have a number one is that.
We have the, we have the.
I know. Well, mine differed too, so, okay. Oh, I see, because the pledge and invocation are numbered, that's why.
Yep.
Okay, yes, well, actually, let's skip to five, the consolidated fee schedule. That's garbage. I mean.
It's suggesting our garbage rates.
Not even worth talking about.
I know.
Trash.
You know, I pride myself on making funny jokes, but that wasn't intentional, so. Darn it. All right, so I went through, so we talked before about waste management has raised our rates a little bit. Part of that, we, I did check, you, we talked about, do they charge us differently than they charge other people? I did find out that we do pay a little more than most places because they have to have special trucks to get around up here through our snow and up and down our mountain.
That sounds reasonable.
So, but I went through quite a few different scenarios with Lori Thomas to see what we can do to have kind of the least impact, but also we want to simplify our rates just a little bit so that they're a little bit more clear. And so what we decided was, Jody, we've been charging 1150 for the first can and we're going to raise that rate to $12.
No, you've been charging 1250.
Oh. Yes, thank you. You're right. Sorry. Yes, we've been charging 1250. We're going to raise the rate to $13, so it's a 50 cents a month for the first can. Then we're going to charge the same $13 rate for recycled cans. And we have been charging 16, so that rate will actually come down. And then we are going to raise the rate for the second can to, I think, $12. So a second can will be a dollar cheaper than a recycle can, but.
So first can is.
13.
13 and second can.
12.
And they were 1250 before and.
850 and 16.
And then what's the recycling?
13, the same as.
Everybody's going to be the same.
Everything, the first can and recycling will all be 13, second, third, fourth cans will be 12.
Okay.
So that will not have a huge impact on most people's bills, and we hope that it will encourage recycling, which is actually happening now. They're, they are recycling the materials. So that's the rate that we're proposing to change, that I'm proposing we change to. So that's the one that Jody has in our consolidated fee schedule, schedule adjustment. So do you have any questions or concerns about that? It brings our collected, we're collecting just slightly more than what we were and the difference is within about $150 of our net with the new rate.
The question I have isn't necessarily regarding the rates, but more our contract with waste management. So how often do we renew that contract and how often do they adjust our pricing?
I think our contract is renewed every three years. Is that right, Chris? And the price adjustments mostly happen at contract renewal unless they have significant cost increases to them generally.
But it's a five-year renewal and then they look at the CPI every year in May.
Okay, so once a year, there's a, there's a rate adjustment built into the contract or at least an opportunity for a rate adjustment, and it's a five-year contract. And where are we in that five-year contract?
I'd have to look. We're either year three or four at this point.
Okay.
And they've afforded themselves that opportunity every year of raise, but it's been very small.
So do you have any more questions or concerns or could we go ahead and vote on that?
I'm ready to vote.
Ready to vote.
We'll vote as soon as Carrie reappears. Carrie, we're going to vote on the consolidated fee schedule. Okay. All in favor?
I'd like to motion.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the new rate schedule for garbage and recycling.
I'll start it.
Okay. Sorry, you guys. I have a motion from council member Pratt, a second from Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right.
So we can close the.
I will close the public hearing for, to public comment. Then we will go back up to either item number one or number four, depending on which agenda you're looking at, resolution adopting the certified tax rate. Anybody have anything they want to say?
I would still like Rob to show us this slide unless we don't feel it's necessary, but I really appreciated the work that went into that and I don't know how many residents saw it originally.
Well, it would be nice to have it in the, in the record for people to see.
I'm having trouble with my computer right now. I'm rebooting.
Jody says she can share it.
Jody said she can share it.
And she can actually share it on the screen, so.
That would be wonderful, Jody.
I just think that's helpful as we begin our session.
Thank you, Carrie. I think that's a great idea.
So while that's coming up, and since there was no public comment, I'll just kind of preface why I put this together, recommended this, and that is, I think it's important for us to have an understanding of what we as a city have done with our taxes. And so I basically did a two-year in review of the various projects that we have worked on. And so this presentation covers some of those. It's not comprehensive and it's just more of a, of a matter of fact that this is, this is what we've done. Jody smiling.
She needs to reboot it. What's your doctor doing to our computers? Maybe while we're waiting here, I thought the transparency committee really came up with good information for the public and I assume everybody in the city read it since nobody's here. But that was a very.
Watch the video.
That was a very good, yeah, right. That was a very good.
Put the video on, on social media.
Very good presentation.
I did get some, some feedback and people appreciated.
And it takes talent to, to pull the words together like he does, so I appreciated that.
I don't think we've, at least I didn't. So, I mean, I was on, I was in on the phone calls part and explaining stuff to Glenn. But man, he's got a talent.
He does.
To take whatever comes out of my mouth and actually make it make sense.
But that's not the right one.
You know.
It's truth and tactics.
And not everybody has that.
No. And so I was, anyway, I told him, I said, I was extremely impressed that he was able to digest that as well as he did.
Yeah.
Let's see if I.
Well, and I know there have been some questions about the transparency committee not being transparent. And I would like, I think we'll ask him soon to do a transparency report on what their mission is.
Yeah, I think.
And what is their, what the vision for them is so that people understand what they're, what they are doing and what they're not doing or trying to do, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that, again, he was able to digest a lot of things. And, you know, the budget isn't terribly complex, but at the same time, at the first time you look at it, it's not the most clear thing either.
And it's, and it's not the same as a business budget. So people that are used to business accounting, it's very kind of frustrating to get started because it's not the same.
Public, private, two different things. Home is, is another animal, so, yeah, it is difficult for people to understand.
She's talking to me.
Okay, how about this? How about?
Let me just talk about.
Yes, let, let's.
Some other analysis that I've done on our taxes.
Okay, and then what we will do is just attach on the YouTube channel the, your slideshow when we can get it up and running, so people can watch it if they want.
So I did an analysis for, not for why we should or shouldn't raise our taxes, but on where our taxes go as a city. And I looked at our city, I looked at basically every city in the state at some level, and to say that the city of Woodland Hills has the highest or second highest or third highest tax in the state isn't exactly a fair statement because we do not have taxes that other cities have. For example, a lot of cities have a tax for a cemetery. We don't. A lot of cities have.
No cemetery, you idiot.
We don't. A lot of cities have a tax for a water district. We don't. Now, would, with those, I didn't do the analysis because I run out of steam. Would those then bring those other cities up higher than we are? I don't know, but it would make them closer at least because ours is going to stay the system, the same, and theirs is going to come up somewhat. So, so that, that's an important thing to keep in mind as we try to do that comparison. A second thing is, the number one tax entity within our tax district obviously is Neebo School District. To give you an example, the, if, if your home is evaluated at a tax rate of $500,000, the first 45% of that tax by state code, you don't get taxed on. You get taxed on 55%. And so if you have 500,000, you're probably going to be paying somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000 to $6,000 a year in taxes. The city of Woodland Hills would get approximately $1,200 of that. The rest of it goes to Neebo School District or the county or to taxes that aren't.
There's the water conservancy district.
Yeah, miscellaneous, the cell phones.
Like the fee to collect your taxes, the fee to send your, your tax bill to you. And so we're, we're very, we're a small percentage of the overall tax. The other thing that's interesting, if you look at the rate of increase of the tax value of your home, that goal is, has gone up over the last nine years, almost double, while the tax, the percentage of tax or the amount of tax that the city collects against that rate has gone down. We are actually paying, paying less percentage of taxes today than we were nine years ago. The dollar value may be higher. In some cases, it's lower, but it, but it's, it's gone down. And so, so we, point is, is that it's, it's important for us to understand where our taxes go as we make these decisions as to whether we are paying too much or too little in taxes. So let me just talk about some of the things that we've done as a city instead of try to show it to you.
Hey, Bo.
Pardon me?
Would it help if you had this in front of you?
Sorry?
Because I've got your, I have yours PowerPoint here.
Do you?
And maybe that would help you.
Yeah. I can make some minor changes to it, but that will work.
There we go.
So, so this analysis is over a two-year period, 2019 and 2020.
Are you going to share that one, David, on the screen or just?
It just, it just barely went through. It's a very large PowerPoint file.
Yeah, that, that one doesn't have all the pictures. It's actually on the city website. I don't know why my computer's being so obnoxious, but. So we, we as a city, and this is in the order of the presentation, but we as a city have applied for and received multiple grants during the last few years. One of the big grants that we applied for was, it impacts our ability to do chipper days. That's like a 96 or $67,000 grant, and it allows us to have chipper days this year. It also allows us to partner with residents to do some, some clearing. We also, there we go. That's it. So I'll just, I'll just pick up from this one here. So the big, the big elephant in this whole thing is the retention. We did, for the mudslides, we've been able to, to put this in, and this picture shows the detention pond that we have. The, the one on the right shows what I call the stairways to heaven where they took our Jersey barriers and made us a spillway type thing for the, to divert the water down into this big detention pond. During the recent rains, there was some collection of water in this detention pond. How much I don't know, but there was water in it. And it was more than what I believe would have been just from rainfall, so it had to come down through here. Going on to the next slide, we also did some, some mitigation down by the park. If you've driven by there, you've seen a big pathway of trees that have been removed and there is a.
Channel.
A channel that diverts the water into a natural channel after you get past the park a distance. The next slide is we had to clean up all of this that we had for, for years. I know that in front of my house for over two years, I had Jersey barriers. I had to negotiate through those to, to get in and out of my house. That's all been cleaned up and the sandbags as a whole are gone. And so that, that I think is a, is a huge step forward. The next slide, talk about the renewal of the chipper days. That, that's, that's a huge thing for us is for safety. The next slide, through the mitigation effort, we had the switchback trail improved greatly. They had to get equipment up to an area to put in a geofence that would collect debris up high. And to do that, they took out a lot of the erosion. And in the next slide, it shows the water bars that were put in. And basically what those water bars are going to do, as the water comes down the trail, it captures into this ditch that goes across the trail and puts it down on the side instead of continuing to go down the trail and cause erosion. So those are great improvements to that trail. Another slide, the next one. We've, we've had some, some volunteers that put signs along the switchback that, that identify the different plants that are there. And so it'd be, it can be used as a very educational process as we go up there. And so then the next slide, we, as many of us are aware, in 2019 and 20, we had multiple waterline breaks. And because of the number that we had, we rose to the top of a not-too-popular list with the state's rural water board. And so they were watching and, and when we went to them to look for assistance, they were able to get us a zero interest bond to do over three miles worth of, of waterline replacements. And we were able to go from a six-inch line to an eight-inch line in many of the places. And we have creative employees and they took and built these very big pressure relief valve boxes. And because they built them, we were able to save about.
He.
Yeah, Corbett. We were able to save about $30,000 for each one of the six PRVs, which, you know, that's $180,000 and that's a lot of road that, or pipe that we can replace because of that. Next slide. And in conjunction with our city staff and our public works committee, we were able to determine that we could replace the roads that had water worked on, on them and instead of repairing them. And so we've got nice roads that don't have a, a patch down the middle. And, and that's a huge, a huge thing on longevity of the roads and aesthetics.
And snow plowing.
And snow plowing, yes.
That's going to make a huge difference in the winter.
It'll be less jarring of the equipment.
Less repair.
The plows. Next slide. As you may be aware, that last year or the year before, we, there was a federal, federal funds were available that was called CARES and we applied for that. We, there's very strict requirements that we had to follow and we had to justify each one of the acquisitions that we made. And here are some of the acquisitions on the next few slides. We were able to get this life pack. And what the life pack is, it's a new version of, or a new state-of-the-art that provides our EMT staff with more information about the, about the patient, its timely information, and it's much more accurate than what we've had in the past. And so it, it enables us to provide more direct to the, to the patient's services. And this device has been used on multiple citizens of Woodland Hills. Next one is a automated CPR machine in effect. And with its sensors and that, what it's able to do is to make sure that we have the right rate of compression, the depth of compression. It provides alerts of what's going on with the patient. And unlike a, a human that's doing the CPR, this machine doesn't get tired and doesn't have to be replaced and interrupted with switching out. And again, this has been used already on multiple. And again, this has been used already on multiple citizens within Woodland Hills. Next slide. We were able to get a, uh, a gurney for the ambulance that is compatible with Salem Hills emergency ambulance. But that means is that in the past, um, well, first of all, Salem is the, is the company that, or the city that transports patients to the hospital. And in the past, we had to wait for that ambulance to get here, to put the patient on a gurney and then load it in the ambulance. With this compatibility, what we're able to do now is while we're waiting for the Salem ambulance to arrive, we can put the patient on there. As soon as it arrives, they're loaded into the ambulance and they're gone and we're saving precious minutes. Again, this is something that's been used on Woodland Hills citizens. Also with the, with the, uh, the CARES money, uh, this system that we're using today was, was funded. And what that does is, is multiple things. One, it allows us to comply with state, uh, public meeting standards. Uh, it allows us to improve and enhance the in-person and the in-law, then the online participation in the meeting. Without this system, we wouldn't be able to broadcast, uh, this, this PowerPoint and other data that we may show. And so it, it creates a lot of enhancements. Next slide. Uh, we've also been able to get some acoustic paneling to put in the, the larger multipurpose room, which improves that acoustics. And so it makes that room, uh, a lot more useful when it comes to public meetings. Next slide. Our fire department, uh, primarily the chief, along with, with his volunteers, were able to put together this new fire truck. They, uh, they get the basic truck, but all of the little bits and pieces that go on it to make it, uh, useful in our environment, uh, they did that. And so that's a big savings. Uh, and there is a list of the things that this new fire truck, uh, has capabilities that are above and beyond, uh, anything else that we've have or have had. And, uh, again, this has been put to use multiple times, uh, in our city and, uh, as we support, uh, the city, the cities around us. Next slide. Uh, we've leased two new public works trucks. Those are bigger, uh, larger capacity than what our previous trucks were. The previous trucks were, were good. They were worn out. They tended to have problems that old trucks have. And so because of this new, these new trucks, we have less downtime. As I mentioned, larger capacity. They're multifunctional trucks in that we have a dump truck or a flatbed or a snowplow. And, uh, we got them in time. The timing was, was good that we were able to use them during the flood mitigation. And they earned us a significant amount of money, uh, on our, on our match. Next slide. We've done, uh, a lot of improvements and enhancements to our communication systems. We use this tool called Everbridge and, um, it allows us to, to send out a variety of different notices and informations. Uh, the beauty of it is that you as a citizen, you get to determine how you want to receive that, whether that's a text, an email, a phone call, you get to choose. Uh, we've also been able to, uh, update and upgrade our, uh, website for, for very little money, um, because of other things that we've been able to do that we'll talk about here later. But one of the key features there is that it's searchable. So if you want to search all of the ordinances, you can do that based upon some keywords that you, you type in. And it allows us to keep, uh, uh, that information more current and, uh, also allows us to quickly update changes as we improve them over time. Next slide. We also acquired some building permit software. It has multiple features, but the main thing that we've implemented so far is, uh, is the building permit. We've had a lot of confusion over building permit applications of what has been submitted and what has been approved. This software makes it very clear to the applicants and also to, to the city as to what's needed, uh, to complete all of the, the requirements of, of obtaining a building permit. Uh, when this, uh, was put together, we had issued about thirty-one, um, building, new home building permits during this two-year period. That number's probably up to thirty-three or thirty-five.
Thirty-eight active permits right now.
Thirty-eight. So, so that, we would have a real hard time keeping all of that current without this software. Next slide, um, community involvement. Uh, we've heard over, over the years, particularly in our last election, that we needed to have more community involvement. And the city has gone, moved forward with, uh, these, uh, different committees. And you can see the number of participants that we have, uh, in them. And, uh, we as a council and a city rely heavily upon their input. Uh, they, they don't make decisions, but they make recommendations. And more times than not, we listen to their recommendations. And, and I would imagine if we calculated the number of volunteer hours that have been put in by these committees, it's definitely going to be in the hundreds and maybe a thousand or two hours. I don't know, but it's a lot. One of these committees is the Trails Committee. And they, uh, went off and got a grant to, uh, to do some improvements at our park. Uh, we're going to be able to put in, uh, the, the materials has been ordered. We're just waiting for it to arrive. Just like everything else right now, it's, it's slowed down. We were hoping it was going to be here a month or so ago, but, uh, I think we're anticipating next month. Um, and so where the yellow lines are, we're going to put in a split rail fence. And where the green line is, is we're going to be able to put in a trail. And, uh, those monies are funded by this grant and, and by volunteers, uh, within the city. Next slide is going to show a sample of what that split rail fence will look like. Um, there are several homeowners in the city that have them. This is one of them. And so that gives you an idea of what that's going to look like. Next slide. Uh, we've, uh, started to do some landscaping around the, uh, the city building here. Uh, the lower two right pictures show the, um, work that's been done at the detention pond here. And, um, and also the left one, bottom left one shows a rock wall. What these pictures don't, um, show is, uh, that over the weekend, we have added some topsoil to this area. And, uh, we are getting it ready to, uh, do some, uh, planting of grass. It's a fairly small area, but we're going to do some grass in that to, to improve and enhance the, the city. And later this fall, we're going to do some other landscaping, uh, when it, when the time is right for, for that. Next slide. Um, we as a city have, um, approved funding for an interactive security, camera security systems. And so we're, we're trying to get the final details of that worked out. But, uh, we're going to have multiple cameras that are going to be proactive and, and the, we're hoping that the software will be able to then identify people versus animals. And so then the system will send us alerts when somebody enters a restricted area. Next slide. Uh, we've done some realignments on the city employees. Patty retired and so, uh, we've, we've added two part-time employees. Lori Thomas is a treasurer, a longtime citizen. Um, she's resumed, she's assumed Patty's role, but she's also providing some, uh, compliance to state financial, uh, issues and, uh, helping us to, to have better, more timely reports there. Marcy Brown is helping, um, Jody. Uh, and she's able to, uh, take a, a big burden off of Jody so that, um, your requests, our requests for information from the city can be more timely and be more responsive. And part of what we're seeing here is, uh, the, the work on the webpage. Marcy's been able to do a lot there. Next slide. Uh, there's been lots of concerns about employees' salaries. And so, um, a year and a half ago, eighteen months, we had a retired HR professional, Severn Johnson, uh, do an analysis. And, um, that analysis provided us three key points. One of those is that we have one employee whose compensation was above, uh, the range. We had, we have one employee whose compensation was below the range. And all of the other members of the city, uh, staff were within range. And we as a city, as a council and, and the mayor have talked about corrective actions, how to resolve this over time. Next slide.
And we have a plan. We haven't just talked about it.
Okay, we have a plan. Um, so here, here's this kind of summary of the grants that we've, we've gotten, uh, during this last little while. And there's, there's probably others that are out there. Uh, but again, uh, the COVID CARES, that was over a hundred thousand dollars. The parks and trails, that's probably closer when you add in to the, uh, the, the labor and that and the equipment that will be donated. That's probably closer to fifteen thousand. Uh, Woodland Hills Days, we were able to get three thousand. And we're working with SEST to get some more money to help with that. Uh, Woodland Hills Days, which is scheduled for September tenth and eleventh. And then the Fire Abatement or Chipper Days, sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Bob, can I add with that? Are the newest round of, of stimulus money to municipalities, um, we will be getting our allotment. If, if we haven't already got it this week, it should be this week. Um, that's based on our population. So we will get about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And we also have an opportunity to get a matching grant that I'm applying for this next week, uh, to, um, help pay for our, that water infrastructure that we talked at the beginning of your presentation. So that is a significant benefit to us as well.
You know, I, if you go back to my earlier comments about taxes and how much we get per hundred thousand dollars of home taxes, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of taxes. Uh, when you consider that for every hundred thousand dollars of taxed, assessed tax home value, you only get two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. A hundred thousand dollars is a very, very big impact to our budget. Next slide, last one. Um, the infamous and wonderful codification, that's done. And we're seeing the, the benefit and results of that. And that is that we're allowed, or we now have this on our, uh, uh, city ordinances and that are online and they're searchable. You put, again, you put in keywords and it'll come up and tell you every time, every place that that word is, is mentioned in our document. So you can go off and, and find, um, whether or not it's legal to, uh, do bow hunting within the city. For example. For example.
Hypothetically.
Yes.
And, and that's it. Yeah, that's, that's what my presentation, my analysis, again, this does not justify or not justify a tax increase. What it says is that even though the, the, we as a, as a country, as a city, as a state have been dealing with some very difficult, uh, situations of, um, COVID and all of those requirements, we have still moved forward as a city. We have accomplished a lot. And it, I think it's important that we as a city recognize that. And in my opinion, I think the city has done a very good job of being wise stewards of, of our taxes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. That's very helpful. Um, all right. So I'm open to a motion if anybody wants to make a motion. Or discussion if you have further discussion.
Let me know what the rate was that we came to, um, or to balance the budget.
Chris, can you speak to that?
Yep, just getting unmuted here.
And let's.
I don't know if he heard Paul.
Chris, if you could, if you could, um, uh, remind us of last year's rate and then the new rate that's being proposed. And, uh, just for the residents' information, the reason why we talk about it in terms of a rate is because that's essentially the percentage that the city's going to get of, of, of the tax. And so, again, it, it helps us to understand it. Not that that necessarily equates to your particular dollar value, but it's what we can use to compare how much we're increasing or not.
Can't hear you, Chris.
I'm not talking yet, just a second here. Um, let me just share this screen here. So here's the certified tax rates for the past several years. Last year.
Chris, we're having a difficult time hearing you. Can you talk a little bit closer to your mic?
Yes, I don't know if this is any better or not. But, uh, last year, our certified tax rate was, was in the twenty-twenty or four, one, zero, two. So point zero, zero, four, one, zero, two. And this year it's being proposed. Did my screen change? Can you see the new tax rate in red?
Yep.
Okay. At point zero, zero, four, two, five, zero.
Okay.
So once again, last year it was point zero, zero, four, one, zero, two. And this year.
Wait, go back to the other green. Look right up there, the line above it, it says the rate. So you can see them simultaneously.
Zero, zero, four, one, four, two, last year and this year.
Four, one, zero, two.
Yeah, that, that's what they were doing certified. The council voted on the four, three, four, five rate. So then you can see this year, the council, what we've advertised in the paper is a four, two, five, zero.
So the actual, and we adopted the proposed one last year, right?
Yes, I believe so. That was, that was your adoption last year.
But proposing this year is a, is a lower rate, but still an increase from what the county proposed.
This is what makes it confusing for people because it's a, a lower rate, but it's higher than the county told us to do. So I want to make sure that we're at.
Result of the new construction.
New construction.
Well, and property tax, I mean, property value.
And property values going up. And so because they went up, the county was proposing a lower tax rate so that we would end up with the exact number of dollars that we got last year.
Even though, the hard part is inflation didn't stay the same as last year. And that's one of the difficulties. So, Chris, because I had a difficult time last year, point zero, zero, four, one, zero, two.
That's what the county proposed, but what we actually adopted was point zero, zero, four, three, four, five.
Correct.
That's what we adopted, point zero, zero, four, three, four, five. This year, we're, we're, we are proposing point zero, zero, four, two, five, zero.
Yes, that's.
That's our proposal. Just want to make sure I get those zeros in the right place.
Yeah. For the residents' sake, the state said this year, if we're going to keep our property taxes very similar to last year, the rate would have only been three, nine, one, five, zero, zero, three, nine, one, five. But to get the additional thirty-some-odd thousand dollars that is being asked for right now, um, a rate of point zero, zero, four, two, five, zero is being requested.
I'm going to move that we adopt the point zero, four, two, five, zero, uh, proposed tax rate for the budget year two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that. Okay, any other questions? All in favor? I think we need a real call. Let's do it. Uh, Makovich?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ottley?
Yes.
Kinniston?
Yes.
McArthur?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes to adopt that certified tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Thank you all for your good work on that. Um, we have a rezone request and I believe that, um, it was sent to all of you. We have a rezone request, and I believe that it was sent to all of you. And I think our first step is if you are willing to consider it, is for us to forward it to the planning commission for their recommendations.
Yes, and will there, will there be public hearings on that?
No, they will hold public hearings.
Okay.
And then, once we get their recommendations, we'll hold.
Cause I look forward to that.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the process is, we send it to them, they review it, have a public hearing, make their recommendation, we get it, we have a public hearing, and then we can vote on it. So it is a little bit of a, of a lengthy process, but hopefully.
And careful, that's why.
Bryce is, is up for that.
I'll be, I'll be. I am. I'll be primarily interested on the neighbors to those properties, you know, the, the area right there.
And they all get individually notified. And so, in case you didn't hear, Bob made a motion that we forward that. Yes, Wayne?
The planning commission, our oldest is not, the planning commission has a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
On a rezone.
Okay.
City council.
Okay.
All right.
I misspoke, thank you. Okay, thank you, Wayne. Thank you for doing that. So the planning commission will send their recommendation, but we will hold a public hearing for sure. So.
I make a motion that we send it to.
Well, Bob made a motion already.
Then I second it.
Okay, then Carrie will second. Any other questions about that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and carries.
I appreciated getting pretty good information about this before it was too far down the road.
Yeah, that was awesome.
I did too.
I liked that.
Very good. Now, we did have a fun little adventure yesterday with some, no, Sunday, with some bow hunting. So Deputy Dotson came tonight just to kind of give us a little update on what happened and what the result was. We're glad to have you here.
Make sure the mic's on.
Should be a little green light around the button.
There we go. Okay. Introduce myself, I'm Garrett Dotson, deputy sheriff of the Dot County Sheriff's Office. Been with the sheriff's office just over 13 years, and just got reassigned through the small contract cities, so that's Woodland Hills, Goshen, Fairfield, and Cedar Fort. So I just travel around the county. But Sunday, I received a call and a text message, a call from the fire chief and a text message from the mayor regarding bow hunters in the city. So I went and did some investigation work on that, and I'm just going to kind of give you a rundown of how this laid out. It's, a call came in Saturday night from a resident regarding bow hunters in the Woodland Hills area, just off of 11200 South area. Deputies responded. When they arrived on the scene, DWR, or the Department of Wildlife Resources officers were already on scene. They had heard the call, and they responded also. The deputies spoke with the Department of Wildlife Resources due to this being in their category. And the deputies were told by DWR that they found that there was no criminal offense that took place, that the hunters had their permits, and they had had permission from a property owner to be on their property. The deputies then left the area and left it in the hands of DWR. On Sunday afternoon, another call came into our dispatch center, and deputy responded by phone call due to the complaint, and stated that he was aware of the situation due to seeing that DWR had, had responded and had already spoke with the same hunters. It was aware, it was made aware that on Saturday night that the hunters had shot a deer, and that they were looking for it. Sunday, I couldn't find out that the hunters were also still looking for that deer. And then, Sunday night, that's when I got notified, and had spoke with the fire chief, and he had told me that a resident had called in and was wondering why they were told that the sheriff's office was not going to be handling this, that was DWR's. So there was probably a little miscommunication there. It sounds like the hunters, they had actually contacted DWR before hunting, and were told that they could hunt as long as they had property owner permission. And so that's what these hunters were based off, knowledge-wise. They are residents of Woodland Hills. The hunter himself was a 13-year-old. When I was contacted, that's when I, I was off duty, I contacted the sergeant that was on duty. He, I told him, I said, hey, have you guys had any calls come in? And he was our swing to graveyard shift, and he said, I don't see anything on our computer system from dispatch. So I said, will you respond to the area to check? And so that's what he was doing. He, right before he came in, another citizen had called regarding the bow hunters. With the description that they gave, the sergeant happened to see their vehicle going around the roundabout, and at that time, he made a traffic stop. And that's where he made his encounter with the, with the suspects. And so in talking with them, when he was done with that, another call came in stating that a deer, a dead deer was located on the citizen's property. The sergeant then contacted those hunters and said, your deer's over here, because they were out looking for it. So there's some information there, probably miscommunication. I had put a call into DWR with one of their lieutenants to help maybe educate that they shouldn't be encouraging people to be hunting in, in city limits. And I have spoke with the mayor regarding some issues there, and I'm open to ideas. I don't know if we need more signage down along the roadways that say no hunting within city limits. I was informed from some of our sergeants in the evening time, especially this time of year, there are people sitting out along 11200 using night vision, probably looking at deer, so.
They're quite often.
They come up that my driveway, I'm just parked waiting. So I thought that because we have an ordinance of no hunting in city limits, that would, that why would DWR have the authority to, to circumvent city ordinance?
So just time, timeout.
So.
Because they don't have an ordinance for no hunting.
Right.
No shooting of projectiles?
Right.
That we have.
Yep.
And that's different.
So.
It's discharge of firearms or archery.
Or archery.
Again, using this wonderful tool that we've got now to be able to do a search, it's ordinance 5-5-2, and it's discharge of firearms. However, we have section D on a property of more than 100 adjoining acres, all within the city limits. The property owner may discharge a firearm on that property as long as they are in compliance with all federal, state, and county statutes. That property, right down there, happens to be the one that, that was carved out for. Because.
No, but I, the, the, this was not on that property.
And, and, and I'm not saying it is.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying that that's what it was for.
Right.
And it was because, as I recall, the Hanks were having problems with wolves, or not wolves, but anyway, nuisance animals that would.
To their cattle.
Would go after their cattle, and so it was carved out that they could shoot those nuisance animals. But my point is that, you know, this, this was the, this was what I brought up with Doral, and there is that carve-out if they have permission. But again, we need to, you know, this might be something we might look at, but I actually don't think we can technically ban hunting.
Right, right.
But what we can do is we can control the shooting of weapons.
Mm-hmm.
As I understand it.
In what you read, if I read correctly, and that is that the owner may discharge, or the owner may allow others to discharge.
It does say the property owner may discharge.
So if you take the letter of the law there, they, the owner can't let somebody else do it, he has to.
But it's only of that one piece of property in the whole entire city. And now they don't have the cows on that property.
By the way.
So it seems like we should change that.
There is 5-5-3, which also says a property owner may discharge a weapon, not a firearm, on his own property of less than 100 acres, only if they have obtained a conditional use permit, permit from the city.
Right.
So.
Else to allow, like, target property, something. So I, I would just like to say that the sign down, just up from the roundabout, says, discharge of firearms or archery equipment within city limits prohibited. I think it's pretty clear. I think we need to put one on the low road, and one on the free drive, and probably one at the base of the switchbacks.
Well, I'm wondering, because again, 11200 is kind of that gray area. Should we put it, let's put some along 11200 on the Woodland Hills side.
Yeah, because everybody's going there, we should put one at the mailboxes, too.
Because people are parking there, scoping, parking at church.
So I just think this, you know, just have clear signage, then it's a little bit simpler and more clear to be able to enforce if we need to go.
You're the one going up the hill, you don't really notice it that much.
Yeah, I, I think that, number one, we need to improve our communication through signage. Two, at the switchbacks, if you go up high enough, you're now out of the city, and so then you're on state land, I think it is. And I believe that that is allowed. So maybe we need to put some sort of sign that shows, okay, here's the magic spot, you can hunt above here, but you can't hunt below here. I, I don't know, just a thought.
So.
At this point, I would say let's just put a sign at the bottom of our switchbacks, and that might discourage people altogether. If we find it's a problem, then maybe we want to go and put a sign up above.
I thought we had some hunters up there.
We did.
This weekend, and they were, as I understand it, not, that they were legal because they were on state property.
Yeah, what, one of the, one of the more interesting things that happened when, it was probably we'd been here for five years, was some hunters shot a deer on state property. Of course, deer don't die immediately from arrows, so the deer came down the mountain, landed on the Pratt's, the other Pratt's property, and was gutted there by the hunter.
Yeah.
Which I thought was really tacky, but it was entirely legal.
Well, not really if they didn't have permission to get it on their property.
Okay, but I think you have to have a no trespassing sign or something, which none of us have.
I would want them to take care of.
Yes.
Of the animal. I would just want them to be respectful and.
Yep.
And, and do the gutting, the cleaning in an appropriate way.
Well, I, the, the, the major focus for me is public safety. If there are 13-year-olds or, you know, 50-year-olds, I don't care, but they're wandering around in the dark with bow and arrows, trying to get their animal, and they're right in people's backyard, I think that's a public safety issue. And so, to me, I think we need to increase our signage, make sure that there is communication with DWR, that we do not allow the discharge of firearms, or what was it called?
And archery.
Or archery. So that it's, it's very apparent, because a lot of people, we find ourselves in public safety, where people say, well, they're in the mountains. And they're so used to going on public land in the mountains to camp, do bonfires, hunt, that they keep doing it within our city limits. And I think that it's, it's an important aspect of the communication would be the signage, because most of the time, it's from outside of our city. If this was a resident inside of our city that found a loophole, if that loophole is no longer necessary, because there are not, there are no cows there, then I think we should change that part.
I, I thought there was cows there that had to be eaten.
And I am not sure.
They weren't. They were across the road.
Okay. But now they were hunting. I would like to take what Carrie said a step farther, and that is, is once we have our signage, our communication clear, I think we need to work with the sheriff's department and have a zero tolerance. And that, 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 that people are cited to the maximum extent of the law.
I, also, we regularly, in the fall, when the snow starts to fly, we do reminders to people not to park, not to just leave their cars at the churches, or the church, you know, regularly. We should do the same sort of thing right before hunting season. We should just send out a notice reminding people, you know, just annually, because we get people moving in and moving out, and so that just ought to be a general reminder every year.
And that's part of my whole thought of proper communication.
Absolutely.
I think we have that responsibility. Once we have that clear.
Yes.
Then I think we need to be just like we are with fires, that there is zero tolerance. It's a public safety issue.
Well, yes, exactly. It's not just a preference. This is, this is something that somebody could really be hurt.
Well, and there's several hunting seasons, so that's one thing, is that we might need to send out the bow hunt, and then the rifle hunt for deer and.
Heaven forbid the black powder hunt.
It will come, it, it will come in stages between August and December. There's a lot of different hunts that those particular animals cross through Woodland Hills. And so although we are okay with hunting on that property above us, we're okay, I mean, before all those houses in Salem were there, there was somebody there every day doing fests, right? Hunting fests in the, in the, in that season. So it's not about hunting, it's about public safety, and I know that we need to be, our, our citizens expect a level of safety if they're outside in their own property during hunting season, they shouldn't be fearful.
Well, and particularly down around 11200, we have a lot of new homes.
Yes.
A lot of development going on there. And, yeah, it's just at, at the one end right now, but who knows what it's going to be like, but, but, yeah, we, we need to, we need to communicate, and then we need to enforce.
And that's the one thing with the sheriff's office, I mean, we are super proud to serve Woodland Hills in, along the, in the law enforcement duties. And that's one thing I was talking with my lieutenant today, was like, I would love to educate our deputies, send an email out, this is what we're enforcing, and if they have questions, to contact me directly.
And we communicate with our citizens. We include you on it, and then you can share it with your deputies, other deputies, if that's appropriate.
Okay. I think anything educational-wise, education, educate the citizens, those that come in and out of Woodland Hills, and then also our sheriff deputies.
And generally, our citizens, when they know, they, they're willing to comply, we just have to be clear to people what the rules are.
So can we send something out this week, then? Just because there are, there have been people who have been talking about this non-compliance and wondering, maybe it would be appropriate to send something out as public safety through Everbridge, just to say, just as a reminder, ordinance 55-2, discharge of a firearm and or a bow is, is illegal in the city limits.
Yep.
That way, they all have the ordinance, too, so that if a deputy does say, no, we don't have to, or DWR says, no, we don't have to, we could, at least they would know the ordinance to cite.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to, just to give Garrett a little bit of background, I was in the middle of all that hullabaloo. And the thing that was, the thing that was most confusing to the citizens was, they think, they make one phone call. Somebody's shooting a bow. Okay. Well, they don't know, okay, there's DWR, there's dispatch, and there's the sheriff's group, and, and one entity, the phone call was telling them, we don't do that. And, and so it started off that way, and it was confusing to them, and me, too. I, I didn't realize there were three entities. You know, we think there's one number to call, and everything's handled. You guys are magical. And so, communication was a big part of the problem, I think, this time.
And, and also with the information I was getting, and it wasn't until today, because I told the mayor I was going to continually dig through our logs and figure out what's going on. I didn't realize that DWR had responded out Saturday night, and told the deputies, hey, these guys are good. And so the deputies are like, okay.
And I was excited to respond that way.
Yeah.
So again, it's, it's all part of the communication training.
Yep.
And so we now know that, that DWR is listening to you guys and potentially responding.
But DWR answers dispatch calls?
Usually.
I don't, I didn't think they did.
Great, they, they'll scan our channels. It's just the deputy said that when they responded, DWR had already beat, beat them to the scene and had already making contact. So they scan our channels, and, and then if we, if there is a wildlife issue, we'll always tell our dispatch, hey, can you contact DWR and have them respond? But they were, they were already here on scene, and it's kind of like if we got to a car accident, and an officer's there, and like, hey, this is mine, I'll take care of it. All right.
So were they on scene the first night?
They were, Saturday night.
And I don't know what they did if it happened again the next night.
It doesn't sound like DWR was on scene on Sunday. That was the sheriff deputies.
Okay, yeah.
But given what had happened on Saturday, they probably. But given what had happened on Saturday, they probably were like, hmm.
Yeah, because it ended up being the same hunters.
Yeah.
So it's like, all right, they've already been talked to by DWR. The deputy's understanding was they had permission, so. So education and that's what I'm, I'm here to do is help work with the city and the sheriff's office.
Educate that property owner that they don't have permission to give anyone permission to shoot on their land.
I, I thought that we did some research, but they didn't give.
That's what I was told.
I asked the wrong Nelson.
Yeah, they did.
So I talked to the sergeant that responded, he's the one that made the traffic stop on the hunters and he saw there, there was written permission from the landlord. Yep, there was written permission.
So, so maybe, uh, part of our education is to educate that property owner who gave the written permission illegally.
They don't have.
I wish we had a copy of that, because I don't know who they are.
Look, if somebody could go on that property, scare the deer over to the county, then, then whatever.
That's fair.
There's a very small spot of county land out of pocket.
But, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the challenge of. And, and let's face it, there are people that this is their traditional hunting grounds. Their, their family for generations has come up to Woodland Hills and they've, and they've been hunting and.
True statement.
And, and we respect that, but at the same time, we've now got houses and people here that we have to be careful about, so.
Yeah, and more housing.
But as I said, when I lived in Orem, this is not a problem unique to Woodland Hills. When I lived in Orem, my house got sprayed by buckshot because people were out hunting pheasants. So out by Utah Lake, so.
Yes.
It's, it's just a problem of what happens when you have these interface zones.
All right, so, um, thank you, Deputy Dotson.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot.
Nice to meet you.
You're welcome, you guys too.
It's good to have you here.
I am happy to be here, so.
We love our city and we generally love our deputies, so we'll, we'll have a great time.
All right, thank you.
Um, we don't have anything else on our agenda, do you have?
I had two announcements, just to say, is one, Congressman Curtis is coming to our city next week on the thirty first for his town hall and will be at the Summit Creek Clubhouse. So I hope that all of you will be able to attend. Um, he's excited to come and talk. He may come a little bit earlier and tour the mitigation projects, just to see where that, because he helped us quite a bit on, on those efforts. And he has, um, part of, because he was so involved with our city, he has started a national wildland, um, fire caucus with other states to see what they can do to help, uh, with land, to, you know, maybe some mitigation prior. Um, but also, uh, response and, um, funding, um, because the western United States is getting hit really hard with fires, as we all know. And so, um, those are some things that he's talking about. Um, in addition, uh, the Parks and Rec Committee has sent out a survey that will be open on September first next week. I did post that on our, um, social media. So once that is open, those who are on the call or who may, um, be aware that that survey will be open, um, they are trying to gather as much information as possible.
And Woodland Hills days.
Yes.
Mentioned it briefly, uh, earlier, September tenth to eleventh. We are meeting, uh, fire chief and, um, Mary Ann. Christiansen and I are meeting with SESD to, uh, fine tune their support and their help. They're, uh, we made a request to them and they said, hey, let's meet so we can understand the big picture and see if there's other areas that we can assess. The Christiansens have done a lot of work. Uh, I sent a copy of their agenda to the mayor for her initial thoughts. Once we kind of get that hammered out between us, I'll, we'll share it some more, but, um, there, there's a lot of things planned and, um, it should be a very good event. Dinner, looks like there's gonna be a dinner Friday night, a dinner and a movie Saturday night.
Oh, really?
Pardon me?
No, the dinner is just Friday night with the breakfast. They're gonna do, the Saturday night, they told me they weren't doing anything because it's state conference.
The agenda that I saw.
They changed it?
Communications I have is that they're doing movie and dinner Friday, uh, Saturday night and that will be J-Dogs.
That's the Friday night. I, I met with them also, but that, yeah, I think that's Friday night.
Well, the, the, they're, you know, the, the, the assignment that I got was to talk to SESD about funding another dinner.
Oh, two dinners.
Cool.
So.
That is a.
I'll never say there are two dinners.
They, they.
I'll never say.
So we've got a state conference.
BYU Utah game.
BYU Utah.
What's wrong with two breakfasts?
Kimponoga Storytelling Festival.
Yep, the storytelling and, um, and the, so there's a lot of things going on that they, they told me that they would be done by two because of, uh, the conference and the game.
I'm still mad at the storytelling festival people.
Yes, they're still the same, same weekend.
Because we went through this regular rule to change Woodland Hills Day to avoid them and then they moved their.
They moved their day. And, and also just to add to that, um, it is also the national, uh, because it's the twentieth anniversary of, of nine eleven, there is a national day of service that day. And, um, there are communities throughout our state that are doing, um, service projects together. There's a large one that, um, Elk Ridge and Payson and Salem are doing together that they asked us if we might want to participate and I said, no, because we are already busy with our Woodland Hills Day. And so, um, but this last week I talked with the Christiansens, I was approached, um, uh, because it, it's a nine eleven day to, to kind of do service projects and to help our, um, first responders and veterans. And I was approached by, uh, Tabitha Zeway, who we have helped in the past, um, to see if we might be able to, um, do a food drive that day and have people either donate through Venmo or bring canned goods um, to put in their Thanksgiving baskets that will go specifically to our local veterans and our local first responders. And so Bishop and Mary Ann are considering that, um, because it would be a very low key, but valuable service. The food pantries are, are very low on food right now and this would be tying in with, uh, with both entities.
So on Saturday morning, there's gonna be a family hike up the switchbacks. There's gonna be breakfast that the fire department is gonna do and we, as the city council candidates, uh, will serve. Uh, there will be a brief, uh, discussion about the hundred and twenty fifth anniversary of statehood for, uh, Utah. That's why we got the three thousand dollar grant. Uh, so we've gotta check the boxes on that and do that appropriately. That's what I remember off the top of my head, but.
Thank you, Bob.
A lot, a lot is.
Great. The Christiansens are doing a good job. Yes, Wayne?
State conferences from five to six thirty. There's a leadership in time.
There's a leadership.
There's leadership from two thirty to four as well.
Yeah, two thirty to four.
But they moved our state conference from a traditional later time to try and.
Be done before the BYU game.
The state doesn't have control of that.
No, and since we're a brand new state, they, they are actually going to work on getting the dates changed for next year because the church generally supports community celebrations, but because it was a brand new state and just nobody thought and then the date came, you know, and so.
So the leadership starts at two thirty and that's why they said they.
Do the dinner down at the pavilion at the steak center.
Oh.
You eat twice.
But anyway. Sure they'll figure that out.
The state presidency's been, was super responsive once they realized there was a problem and, and, and I knew when I saw the date that there was nothing they could do to change it.
BYU and Utah did not change the date of the game.
So anyway.
Yeah.
All right. So we do have a council member that is under some time constraints tonight, so we probably need to, um, close up as quickly as we can. However, we did have two, um, more court filings this week by, um.
A resident?
Yeah, by, by the res, by this resident of the city that's been filing. So we, you may want to get an update on that in a closed session if you.
I have a motion that we have a closed session to discuss legal matters.
Oh, I'll second that too.
Okay, I have a motion from Malkovich and a second from Ottley.
Keniston.
Um, yeah, well, from Ottleston. Um, from Ottley, um, Carrie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Doral?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, we will close the public meeting for the, temporarily and convene in a closed session.
Doron, Doron or Ott?
Doron.
Okay, I'm reconvening our public meeting. Okay, I have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.